I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Kristen, can you do the roll call?
Yes. Commissioner Bardis?
Here.
Commissioner Dolan noted that she would be absent, so we'll need a motion to excuse her absence. Chair Kempner?
Here.
Commissioner Hamame?
Here.
Commissioner Woods?
Here.
And approval of the agenda. I have a motion to approve. Are any changes?
Chair Kempner?
Yes.
Um, we will need to, a motion to excuse the absence of-
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, motion to excuse Commissioner Dolan.
All in favor?
I'll support that first.
Oh, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, she's excused. Now, approval of the agenda. Motions or changes?
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Um, approval of the minutes of the April 25th, 2023 meeting. Any changes? Or motions?
Motion to approve April 25th, 2023 meeting minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Do we have any communications?
No communications.
Okay. Um, and now is the time for citizens' comments. This is for items not on the agenda. You will have time to address agenda items during the meeting. For any comments, we ask that you come to the podium, state your name and city of residence, and limit your comments to three minutes. The planning commission will not engage you in conversation, but they will be noting your concerns and will try to address them during discussions. Do we have any citizen comments? Okay. Moving on, the Benjamin sketch plan.
So, we have the applicant and their team here this evening, and I'll let them kind of talk through what they're proposing. But I did want to take a few minutes to just go over what we look at when we're looking at a sketch plan, and then also the planned unit development and kind of the history of how we got to at least this point before the planning commission this evening. So, this particular conglomeration of properties is currently zoned gateway, which does not permit multiple family. Um, the applicant is looking at a primarily multiple-family property with some allusions to some commercial potentially in the future, and I'll let them elaborate on that. But in general, this use is not permitted right now in the, in the gateway district. The master plan, however, does contemplate multiple-family uses for this property. As you all know, we just started our zoning ordinance update, which I will update you on later in the meeting. Um, but we're a good year and a half to two years away from having this property zoned to match the master plan and having standards that go along with the recommendations of the master plan and of the downtown master plan. The applicant has a project that he's contemplated for a number of years now, and he's ready to move forward with something now. So, as a vehicle to do that, staff had a pre-application meeting with the applicant and his team and recommended that he look into a planned unit development. I know some of you are already familiar with the planned unit development, but in case you're not, we're basically taking a proposed development by the applicant and writing some zoning standards for this particular site. So, they would propose a very detailed plan, which they have conceptually at this point. Um, and the plan that is approved is what can be built there, with only very minor deviations would be considered unless they came back to you and asked for additional approvals. So, in this case, the applicant would be proposing a use that's not currently proposed in the district. Another deviation from the ordinance would be the parking requirements. As you know, our parking standards are under review right now. We'll have some preliminary recommendations from our parking study steering committee, I would anticipate, in the next month to two months. Um, so that would be some additional information that, that you have to go on, but that's also part of the zoning ordinance update and is also a ways out. Um, the applicant in our pre-application meeting was told about the downtown design guidelines, and just from a very cursor review of the plan, it does look like they've made some efforts to incorporate some of the elements that are in those design guidelines. Um, all of those would be things that we would look at to see if what the applicant is proposing matches the future land use. And then, secondly, there are a number of standards that are listed in the planned unit development ordinance section, which I've noted for you in the supplementary memo that was suggested by the chair. The applicant has to meet three of those specific standards in order to qualify for a planned unit development. It would be a recommendation of the planning commission to the city council. Um, before I talk very briefly about some of the aspects of this plan and a sketch plan, does anyone have any questions on a PUD, what it requires, the process, et cetera?
I... Did you have something?
I did have a question, but not necessarily about the PUD, about the master plan.
Okay.
Do you want to go first about the PUD?
Um, yes, only because somewhere in there it was listed that there was a parking area that they then, in the future, wanted to turn into retail, I think. We can't do that really in a PUD, right? If it's built as parking, it is parking unless they re-go through the process again. Yes?
So, yes, unless they were to present like a phase one and phase two plan, and then you could consider it like that.
Okay.
So, it would depend on how it's presented, I guess, is my answer.
Okay.
Um, the way I read our preamble for the PUD-
Mm-hmm.
It, it says it's, it's an alternative to traditional development by permitting flexibility in the regulations for development.
Mm-hmm.
Not necessarily the zoning district. Is this something that the city has done in the past?
So, we wouldn't really be, the, the underlying zoning would remain gateway. It would just have the PUD over it. It's kind of like an overlay to allow for flexibility, as stated.
In the development?
Yes.
Um, the master plan, I'm sorry, I have another question. The master plan, you said that it contemplates multiple family?
Mm-hmm.
What does that mean to you? Because contemplates, to me, is not that it's allowed.
So, here's what, I can tell you exactly what it says. So, they have a list of the following land uses are expected to continue, and then below that, in description of gateway corridor, which is the recommended future land use for this parcel and surrounding parcels, it says the following land issues, land uses should be added to these areas. Upper-story residential and multiple-family buildings, no more than three stories. So, by contemplates, I mean, this is what's suggested?
For future land use?
Right.
For the amendments we're working on.
So, right, I do think as we can move forward with the zoning ordinance, something that the zoning ordinance steering committee might talk about more is the three-story part, but I, I don't really see a world where multiple-family doesn't get added to this area. So, I guess that's what I mean. There's a little bit of room for discussion, but I think the use will most definitely be included.
You just question whether it will allow three-story?
I think that that is a, an item for discussion for the zoning ordinance steering committee.
Do you know, would this be considered three-story since parking is on the first floor?
So, that can lead me into my next point about a sketch plan. So, we had a pre-application meeting with the applicant. We were talking in very large, general terms about big issues like spanning a roadway or closing a roadway. Um, not about details like how we would interpret a story, and we haven't looked at it in that detail. Um, Carlisle Wartman was part of that pre-application meeting, but, but we just haven't provided a thorough review, so I don't have an answer for that. And sketch plans are really meant to get the feedback from the commission without having had a thorough review from staff yet. I can say, though, that public safety has been consulted on this span, and they're theoretically okay with it. We'd have to review the details. DPW has been consulted on this idea, and their preference was that the roads stay open, so they are also theoretically okay with the general idea of what is proposed.
Okay. Thank you.
That's pretty much all I have. The applicant can go into, to much more detail. I know they're looking to get as much feedback as they can from the commission.
So, who would like to come up and talk to us?
Good evening. My name is Wayne Wadika. I'm the principal, one of the principals in the venture. Um, I live in Birmingham, Michigan. Uh, I've been doing business here and own property in the Huntington Woods, Berkeley, Oak Park area for 32 years. We started out as Huntington cleaners on the corner 11 in Coolidge and acquired about 22 different buildings, um, fully occupied buildings in the, uh, in the tri-city area here in Oak Park, Huntington Woods, and Berkeley. Uh, we started assembling this property back in 2007 when we built our office building. We're located, our headquarters is at 2060 Coolidge. It's a red brick building directly across, well, actually right next to this project. We built that project about, that building about 17 years ago, and about a year after that, we started assembling the lots to the, to the south of us for additional parking in the future. And as time went on, we wound up buying the whole next block and a half, and we've had it occupied as duplexes and good standing for all these years. And we feel at this time it's, there's a pretty good demand for this type of product, and we're excited to go through the details with you today, as much as you like, and we'd really appreciate your feedback as much as possible, so we can come in with a project that, uh, you can feel good about, Berkeley can, um, be proud of, and will be consistent with our, our, uh, vision for being good citizens here in Berkeley. Uh, when we, it's, I wanted to note out, when we built our office building, we didn't need one variance or one, one, um, zoning change. We built right within the, the context of what was required by the city, and we assembled the whole block and put our parking on both sides. This site's a little challenging. I think all of Coolidge is a little challenging. The handicap is the depth when you're trying to build any sizable project, so that's why we went to the first floor. Um, we've been very active. I've been a DDA member, two four-year terms, been a prior president of chamber of commerce here, uh, for three years, a very active supporter of anything, anything Berkeley, Huntington Woods, Oak Park. So, we're, uh, we want to build a project that, that we feel good about and is consistent with our values and, and, uh, is a, is a real asset for the community. With me today, uh, we have our architects, our team, Peter, uh, from Design House in Auburn Hills, has, uh, been, is the architect behind the project. Uh, additionally, um, our, our Joe from Giffords is here. He's the site engineer. Our builder, Jeff Johnson's here. Our attorney, Ryan Pluck, is here, and we have three interns with us that are working with us for the summer. Uh, Wayne Wadika, Elliot Nederhut, and Blaze. Uh, these two guys are working with us, and Blaze is an intern with a law firm, so they're at their first planning meeting tonight also. So, I want to introduce our team. Uh, Peter, would you like to join me?
Description?
Sure. And, uh, your pleasure. If you'd like to start with questions or you-
Uh, yeah, I'll just, I'll just let you talk first and before-
I'll give a, I'll give a brief overview from a design standpoint. Uh, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Peter Stuhlreier, Design House Architecture, 3300 Auburn Road, Auburn Hills, Michigan. Um, getting into this project, uh, our primary goal from, from a design standpoint was something that fit in, that felt like it was always here, but was something that the community needed. A, a product that the community didn't have yet, maybe much of, with a common hall, elevator entry, uh, covered parking. Um, and, uh, fulfilling some of the fundamental massing and, and kind of visual goals of the gateway district. And insofar as asking for a PUD for the multifamily to, to move away from some of the other goals that might have been in there, and, and they might change in the next two years. But the PUD is to, is to look at this as a multifamily, uh, structure. It's unique, um, but it is, it is kind of a mid-century modern. Um, it has some warm features. It has nice punctured fenestration, balconies that push in and push out. Um, it may seem at first glance, and if you could show the site plan, Kristen, it may seem at first glance that this is a, um, that this is a, a large, a large project that fills up the property pretty good, and that's true, it does. But in these communities around where we are, that's, uh, pretty much the standard operating procedure for a project like this. Um, obviously, the challenge was parking, and we're able to provide the parking that we need to operate the facility under, under the first floor, under the second floor, which would be, which would, where the multifamily started. Um, to, to help us with the density and with the operations, we are contemplating spanning across Columbia, I believe it's Columbia. Um, and that's why the attorneys are here. They're not here to lawyer up on anything. They're here to talk about these air rights details that might come up in any of your questions. So, um, the, uh, I know there's a, there's a future idea that if Wayne acquires the property to the south, it alleviates the parking on the south wing of the building and allows us to convert that to business and better fulfill some of the, uh, some of the long-term objectives of the, of the corridor. So, it is convertible on that end, uh, ha, if we were to acquire land for that, for that park. And it is designed as such. It is, the, the ceiling heights and the flat slabs and the, the elevators and the access points are all meant for that to eventually occur. Maybe we call it a phase two. Um, if it's further down the road, maybe we come back in for a revised PUD, or even come back by right if the zoning is in place. So, this is a, this is a really, really cool design. We're really happy with where it's, where it's come to at this point, and we want to share some of the details. Maybe we can flip through real fast and just kind of show a few things and understand the depth of the property and the setbacks. Um, most of the setbacks, we actually adhere to what's contemplated in the zoning now. Um, and even our front Coolidge setback is in keeping with the average of the Coolidge Street setbacks all the way around, uh, up and down the street. So, we're not pushing very hard, but one thing we are pushing is that to get the herringbone pattern parking to work, um, it's threading a needle, so we, we need to maintain that width. If we were to come out of here and say, "Well, you gotta push it back 15 feet from the front setback," we'd, we'd be in a totally different ballpark in terms of our design strategy. So, we're really kind of hung on that east-west dimension. Uh, but you do notice that on the south wing, we pushed back a little bit further from the street front. Um, and incorporated some green space, a pocket park in the back, and kept all of the pedestrian flow that, uh, and even the, the snow, the snow storage areas that we would need along Columbia underneath our bridge, as it were. So, that's, uh, that's also taken care of. Um, we've, we've come up with a way to deal with the trash and, uh, and access points from the sidewalk, so that's a good, that's a good shot of the site plan. If we could look at the, um, keep going a little further. Okay. The unit layouts, predominantly, these are one bedrooms and studios throughout the, throughout the building. That's what we find is in demand right now. Some of the one beds would have an opportunity for a second bedroom or an office for people that work from home or that have, uh, additional, additional occupants. But for the most part, we're talking about, um, conventional one beds with a common hall. Every one of these, because they're all elevator access, would be accessible for all mobility types. A lot of product that you're getting around these areas is walk-up townhomes, where you're driving into your garage or into your parking lot, and you're walking up one, two, three stories sometimes. Uh, those do comply with code, but they certainly don't fulfill the ability to, um, service all types of people, um, and mobility levels, age groups, and so on and so forth. Uh, so as you can see, there's the first, uh, first floor residential, which is the second floor, and then there's 58 total units. That's the third floor. That's the final floor with a common hall. And then, when you get up to the penthouses, um, and you, you noticed in the, in the, in the rendering that you saw first, is that the penthouses are pushed back from the street and have a pitched roof, so that, uh, that pitch only, that pitch mid-rise is 40 feet from the great, from grade, which currently, I believe, does meet the, the code for that district. So, that gives us an opportunity to have some of these really special units on the east side, uh, that have two levels, a living level on the ground, and then their own internal staircase up into a bedroom and, uh, a little patio on the roof. Um, all concealed from Coolidge. So, if we, if we move up a little bit, we've got some, we've got some units, yeah, we've got some unit plans, thought through, thought through that. This would be a view from Columbia, looking back towards Coolidge. Um, you can see, we, we visually, uh, settled down that, uh, that hard white edge, so that this confronted the residential districts in a softer way. Um, the fenestration helps with that, the balconies, some of the, some of the shadow lines that we used also, um, helped that happen. But you can see, looking at that, the third floor just kind of gently eases its way up into the, into loft area, so.
So, is that the, the span right there? Is that, uh, residences?
Uh-huh, yes, sir.
And how many are in there?
Four.
Four?
Mm-hmm. There are four in there, and it's a, it's a M-dot clearance, so it'll be 14 six clear minimum, um, driving under that. We talked to fire about that and traffic, so.
And then, would you be requiring any more curb cuts?
No.
Okay.
No, we just, we have-
Is the existing?
Well, there's a curb, there's, we're not curb cutting off of Coolidge. We're curb cutting off of Columbia and what's the north street?
Cambridge.
Cambridge, so, um-
Currently, there's one curb cut on each, actually, there's two on Columbia, one going in north, one south, and one coming in south on, on Columbia. I'm sorry, Columbia's two, left and right, and Cambridge is one, so we would only have an exit, there'd be an entrance and an exit off of each road, same side of the road.
Right.
Show that on the cycle.
Yeah, we can go, we can go back to it. But, uh, you can see here, we've got a six-foot masonry screen wall that matches the masonry from the building, uh, directly on the property line with the single-family homes. Um, maintaining trees and landscape, um, for additional screening and buffering. Okay, there's a, there's an aerial view. Um, so, yeah, it's kind of that post-manufacturing adaptive reuse feel, that kind of vibe with it. It's not, uh, this post-modern kitschy kind of dated-looking product. This is something I think that is a little more toned down, a little more grown up, and, uh, just right for what we're, uh, what we're trying to portray here in terms of quality of project and uniqueness and timeliness. Let's see, what else we got? There's just a photo insert of the, of the project on the road. You can see the very right-hand corner. You can catch the, you can catch the loft level kind of popping up, toned out in the kind of a dark bronze metal. That looks like it's coming down Cambridge?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, and these houses that are drawn in here are to scale and to size and in the right location, so you get a feel that it's not, uh, it's not this giant looming, um, you know, project over the residents.
That's not how it feels to me.
I get it. Uh, well-
That was my initial reaction, was that last picture. I think it looks like a big, huge wall, and I was going to ask how far those homes are. Because if you look in your aerial that you had up there, usually, even if it's commercial, there's a huge parking lot that has that space between this big building and the single-family homes, and you don't have that space. You're stuck with, with where you have it, and the highest part of your building is the part that faces those single-family residential structures. So, that's what's a little concerning to me. I wonder if you had an opportunity, if you plan to, to have meetings with those homes near- I wonder if you had an opportunity, if you plan to, to have meetings with those homes nearby? Because I, I anticipate you're gonna get some input from them, so you, it might be a good idea to reach out to them in advance.
We, we fully intend to do that, uh, with the neighbors, have a discussion with them. We think the building actually provides a, a nice buffer from noise and Coolidge, as well as, uh, we can control lighting. Cause most of the parking is underneath the building, so we think we've got some design features to actually soften it. And the roofline is intended to look like a residential roofline. When you look at the back of the building, it uses up like a, like a large home. So, we, and these houses sit back, they're not on the property line. They all, they're on the other, they're on the easternmost edge of their lots. They're all on the back, the three homes that, but this project.
How far do you think?
Okay, so there's just two, there's two answers to that question. There's, uh, we're twenty, right, Joe? How far are we from the, from the wall to the face of the building is twenty-something? It's the entire third row of parking, right?
In the aisle.
In the aisle. So, we're not, the building isn't back against those houses. The building is, the, the wall, the screen wall is against the property line. But then, you're twenty-five.
There's a row of parking on a turnpike.
Yeah, you're.
So, you do have parking there?
Yeah.
Between the building and?
Just like if it was commercial, we have parking there. Right, okay, so there, you can see the building ends, the building itself ends at this dash line. This is open space, open sky, all the way back. And so, it's an entire aisle and an entire row of parking.
And then, there's the wall?
Then there's the wall, right. So, I mean, any, any commercial building, had this been, or could this be commercial or office or retail? Really, the, the goal depth of those buildings is about sixty-five or seventy feet also. And I'm not sure where you're gonna land on, uh, where you're gonna land on height in the, in the new zoning. But, you know, probably no less than what we're, we're looking at.
So, as a point of clarification, forty feet is permitted currently in the zoning district. So, if someone were to build one of the permitted uses.
Which is a, like a commercial building?
Yeah, there's a variety of, yeah, forty feet.
And it's not any further, it's not any closer to residential structures than a development would be?
Presumably, we, I haven't reviewed it in detail, so.
By ordinance?
Pres- presumably.
Right, right, cause you haven't looked, right, right, sorry.
That's okay.
In some cases, they may wanna put the parking in the front, which would push the building back further. So, it just depends on the type of use. We are very sensitive to the neighbors, uh, which is why we, you know, did the slope roof. And we put in the park, if you notice the pocket park on the south property, we fully intend to green that up, uh, with evergreens with some height. And our discussions with the neighbors, as we've done with other projects that I've developed, would be to offer them an opportunity to create a screen at our expense, some landscaping on their side of the wall. Uh, whether it's evergreens or, uh, cedars or whatever, that could give them more, more privacy than they currently have. Cause there is no wall, there's a chain link fence and, uh, a wood fence, wood stockade fence on the south side. So, on our, our office building, which is to the north, we have a full six-foot brick, brick wall that matches the building. The neighbors behind it have landscaped it and they really don't even see, we've been great neighbors the whole time, they're in favor of the project. So, putting a building there, we think screens it, buffers it, will help them landscape their yards. Uh, and the height is permitted in that zoning district currently. The handicap on this site is the, on all of Coolidge is the depth. Cause you're only going, getting ninety, well, ninety-five feet from the sidewalk back to the property lines. So, if anything's gonna develop of a substantial nature, it's gonna be like what we're doing in that area.
So, maybe I got that feeling, um, because it, you got that bridge and so it kind of closes it off even more. What's the purpose of the bridge?
Well, initially, we had come in, our initial discussion was to close the road.
Okay.
And there's utilities running under the road, uh, fire and safety didn't, wasn't crazy about closing the road, we didn't push it. Uh, we've been very patient with this, we've assembled, we've, we've gone through the whole site plan, uh, the revisions. We've been very supportive of the site, of the whole redone, redistricting, rezoning of the city. In our initial meeting, it came up that, hey, there's other examples. The concept was brought to us, we didn't promote it.
Okay.
We suggested, because other communities have very similar projects, uh, with over going over the road and they fit in quite nicely. You don't really notice that they're there, they just sort of fit, it's just unique to Berkeley.
So, that was a recommendation of Carlisle-Wartman, that they consider a span since the road could not be closed.
So, just, I'm just curious at this point, uh, does it serve a purpose for your development? Like, do people cross?
There's four bedrooms up there.
Right, but they're separate units, though, they're separate.
It's contiguous, the hallway's contiguous. Uh, it gives us the ability to build one building, we think the design is better this way as opposed to two independent buildings with completely different, you know, infrastructure surrounding both.
Right.
So, are there amenities servicing both sides?
There, well, the pocket park is, the pocket park on the, on the southeast is, is a community park for the, for the tenants, for all the tenants. And there are, there are items that get shared that, uh, would cause the costs of two separate developments to be, um, to, even with the span, to take the economics out of the play. That, we're talking about the fire riser room, the fire alarm, the, the waste removal areas, um, the number of handicap spaces, even the number of parking spaces. I highly doubt that the, the building on the south, those parking spaces don't support that wing. So, all of that would have to be negotiated out into maybe turning the, the south lot into almost unusable or maybe like four townhouses or something. So, it really plays in economically. And we're going through some code studies to find out, some of these stairs don't have to go off all three floors. Some of the elevator, one of the elevators or both elevators don't have to go all three floors. So, there's tons of savings by connection. And we thought because Columbia was quite a small traveled and small, uh, right-of-way, short right-of-way, that we're able to do this, uh, and maintain the sidewalks for the pedestrians to walk through. I think it's pretty cool.
Also, we wanted to build a building that had interior hallways as opposed to, you know, erector sets on the outside of people going up and down metal stairs. And we could build that right now, that would fit. We'd have a, the building wouldn't be as deep, but it wouldn't be as attractive either if you look at some of the stuff that's going up. And in old parks, they're building buildings with, you know, they look like old motels, right? They're just steel staircases on the back of the building, there's no elevators. And you've got residents in and out, up and down the halls on the exterior of the building. We wanna build a product that, you know, people are comfortable in, get in the building, they're there, they're in a hallway, they can enter the unit from, you know, a comfortable space and, uh, then take the elevator down and go right to their car that's probably gonna be covered, uh, have a covered spot to it. So, we, we are building a bigger building that's gonna be more comfortable and we think longer term, a better fit for the community and for the type of tenant we're trying to attract.
It's just a better product.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't, I mean, I don't wanna go, I don't wanna overstep, but the PUD, the exemplary design, the PUD process, I don't think that the, the little three-story walk-up things are gonna move any of the councils to say, oh, you want a PUD for that?
Right.
You put that somewhere else.
Right.
You know, this is a, this is a signature project.
Does anybody else have any questions?
So, um, so you obviously had to buy up some properties, right, to fit this in?
We own all the property.
What's that?
We own all the property currently.
You own all the property?
Yes, all been zoned gateway. Uh, we've been acquiring it over, there were, we, there were four different owners in those six duplexes, uh, as I was acquiring them. So, I've made four different purchases since two thousand and seven. And they're all leased, we have them occupied, and we have great demand, we put a sign up and we've, we've never had vacancy there. So, um, we've operated it for quite, quite some time. That's why we're, we've been patient with this, we watched the project, the process. We've been in touch with, you know, Matt, um, and the, the various planners over the last couple of years. And Kristen, um, has been great to work with thus far. We were at a planning commission meeting here, um, a couple of years ago when you talked about, um, the Lost Lot project, which I was remotely involved in for a period of time. Uh, so, we've really watched and respected the process and we wanted to come in at a time that we felt, one, economically made sense or demand, uh, in the area. But secondly, we, we don't wanna, we were willing to wait until the zoning was redone. We were, in my last meeting, our first meeting, was, listen, if it's gonna take another year for this to get properly zoned and it, and tweaked to fit, we'll wait. Cause we don't have any real pressure, we don't have the typical developer pressure on, on a project. So, the decision to talk about a PUD made sense to us. And the, the spanning of the road made sense to us and it makes the project viable economically, which is not, we don't have a hardship. We're not coming for a hardship issue on any of the economics. Uh, just the depth of the project is, is, uh, the only hardship we have. And I think we've overcome that with the, the first floor part.
What's the, uh, what's the rate for one of these units?
What rate would be about two dollars and sixty cents a foot is market right now. Uh, the Ivy's leasing up at between two fifty and two seventy-five a square foot. And they anticipated a ninety-day lease up for that, for their fifty-four units. They've done a nice job, I walked their project with Freedman's about a month ago. And it looks great what they've done and repurposed that building is, has been well done. So, their demand is very high, that's given us confidence to continue to move forward. We have a lot of feedback from residents in Berkeley and Huntington Woods and even North Oak Park as people are aging out of their homes and they don't wanna own a house, but they wanna have a residence here. There's really nowhere to go, and we're hearing that more and more. I heard that when we were looking at the Lost Lot project a few years ago. So, we feel that that, that market rate is consistent with, it's less than Royal Oak. It's, but it's, it's in an area, um, economically that the area will, will carry.
Couple other little issues to, to cover before we get into deeper questions. We, we have done a lot of work, uh, from an engineering standpoint as well. And Joe, you can chime in if I, if I tell a fib. But the sewer depths and the sewer, the sewers and the water, uh, the locations of them all work, uh, for our underground retention. So, all of the, the parking on the, on the northeast is, has an underground retention, uh, basin underneath the parking. So, all stormwater is going there and then releasing at the, at the current rate into the sewer system, kind of on the, on Coolidge or on Columbia.
This whole area.
And that's all underground, so.
So, it'll carry the project.
So, we're able to do this without, without causing, you know, off-site flow. Matter of fact, probably less than the off-site flow is now. So, that's one thing. Two, we kind of have a name, the name isn't set in stone, but this was the, the Benjamin Family Farm. This district is part of the, the city, so that's where the name came from. Trying to tie it back to the community. There's, uh, you know, we think it's, we think it's got great amenities for what it is. It's not the type of development that is supposed to have, you know, gyms and lounges and offices and things like that because it's in the village, it's in the city. We, we don't wanna cannibalize people taking advantage of being in the town. So, that's, uh, there's no need for those kinds of, those kinds of amenities. The, the greatest amenities we have are the park, a little place to walk the dog and the upper-level roof gardens. I don't know if you got a good image of one of those in the, in that supplemental image package? Really neat, though. Oh, you can only, we didn't get it close enough with that yet? Oh, so those are the, you can see them up there, little roof, there, so. The stairs from that unit go up and out and.
Have a little patio set.
So, those units would face the neighborhood, but they're, they'd have a patio on the Coolidge side.
So, would this be a residence, and you know, you mentioned before about, um, you know, aging in place, um, you know, those that don't wanna take care of their house anymore and move into a ready-made residence? So, is that the target audience, empty nesters, older population?
With the studios and one bedrooms, that seems to have hit the mark for that, for that group. We also have Beaumont down the street, we think there will be a fair amount of medical professionals that would be, find this desirable. Especially having new space in the area, there's really not any new, um, construction in the area. The apartments around Beaumont are all pretty aged, so I think it's gonna get a mix of young professionals, uh, people aging in place, people that have owned homes or still have families in Huntington Woods and Berkeley, they wanna be here seasonally. Uh, that's, that's, I think, what we're gonna, gonna draw.
Okay, yeah, 'cause I was just kind of doing the math and if you took two fifty-five square foot and looking at, uh, eight hundred square, eight hundred sixteen square foot apartment, that's, uh, a little over two thousand bucks a month, right? Is that what you're estimating?
Right, some of the units are seven hundred, some are eleven hundred. So, there'll be a, there'll be a range.
And you're, and you're confident you'd be able to, to fill these units at this rate?
It's leasing up at the Ivy currently.
With what, consistent with?
The Lost Lot building.
Okay, yeah.
There's fifty-four units there, uh, they've got high demand at the, at this rate. And it's a re, it's a remod, a nice building, it's remodeled. Uh, they're anticipating a fill, filling the project in ninety days with the current demand. So, we think the price is consistent with.
We're, we're seeing that price, we're seeing that price all over Metro. I mean, it's Ferndale, Rochester, Rochester Hills, Troy. That's just, those are the going numbers and putting a, putting a covered automobile in there and possibly even a roof deck, some balconies that are, that are good, uh, it's not gonna be a problem filling it up. We're seeing these buildings ramp up right away.
So, we had talked a little bit about the property to the south. We do not own the property to the south, that's currently Home Endor. They occupy the building that's right on Eleven and Coolidge and they own the parking lot right there.
Right here.
Right there, not Rubina, that's their lot. Down the road, uh, I've had discussions with the owner about buying the property. At some point, we'll have an opportunity to acquire that, that property. And we think owning that lot creates flexibility. It doesn't mean we're gonna wanna come in and rezone that to, to commercial. But it creates flexibility having the building on Eleven Mile that could be converted, either renovated or demolished and rebuilt. But this gives nice parking for that development tied in with ours. So, we think we could create a very nice corridor there from the, from the corner in. We own Eleven and Coolidge right across the street from Huntington Woods and then the building, um, this is our property here, this office building. This site is ours as well, it goes to the back of, uh, Discount Office here, Bill Lost Lot Credit Union. Here, this is an apartment building. This is a future development and our intention ultimately would be to buy Discount Office and create another buildable, sizable project there in the future. So, then on Eleven Mile, we have the corner of Eleven and Coolidge and then we're putting a, a bar in next to the oil change, uh, the old Parker. We own that property, uh, they'll be open, hopefully in thirty days. So, we've got a deep commitment to the area and the corridor. And we've got eyes on future development once this is, once we get this one. We're not just here, here today going to all types of developers, we've entered thirty-two years and, you know, we've got a, a substantial investment in the property around this corner.
Who, who owns that parking lot, just south of, uh?
Home Endor.
Home Endor, okay.
They've got the blue building.
Yeah.
Corner, and we've, we've had some discussions with them over the years.
You say you own those parcels directly across on the other side?
Yep, yes. The, well, Discount Office is right here. That's not our building, but our property is this on, this, this here, around, this is an office building we occupy. And then, this is our property here. Uh, this is our headquarters right, right on Eleven, uh, twenty-sixty.
Um, can you speak to like any of the site circulation with the parking?
Yes.
So, say you're driving.
Good question.
Um, through there and like how it's gonna interact with the streets and whatnot?
So, on this, on this, on the larger part of the building, it's a, it's a herringbone pattern with, uh, one-way only. So, you can, you can see we've directed the herringbone to make it so that the, the exit comes out onto Cambridge. And we, we channelized, we, we channelized those, then we had to keep no traffic going, going down Columbia. So, none of our, there'll be signage to disallow anybody exiting here or here from turning that direction on Columbia.
Oh, okay.
So, that'll quell the traffic, uh, in that direction as well as Cambridge. So, um, you're gonna turn in, you're gonna find your parking space, there'll be, parking spaces will be assigned. You'll also turn in from this way, go all the way through and out. This one is head-in, lots of room in the drive aisle, so you'll be able to park, back out and leave on that side.
And we'll be eliminating two curb cuts on Coolidge actually, because right now, we have a Coolidge, we have a curb cut that goes into the south property. Actually, three, right, uh, coming in. So, it'll clean up, you know, turns left and turn, right turns just to the streets as opposed to into the driveways that currently access those, those duplexes. So, we think it cleans up the traffic pattern all around the project.
And, um, you mentioned the spots are assigned, so I guess I'm. And, um, you mentioned the spots are assigned, so I guess I'm sort of envisioning if you turned down Cambridge, you went through the first set of parking, didn't find a spot, you would flip around on Columbia and go through, or is that not really envisioned?
Once you have a, once you have a unit, you have a number on your space.
Okay. And are there any guest spots accounted for? I, I think there's parallel parking, right?
There is a lot of parallel parking on the front, on, on Coolidge. So that's our, that's, that's what we would call guest spots. However, um, we're, we have about one point two four, one point two spaces per unit. All one bedrooms, maybe a couple that have two. So professionally, that's, that's adequate for what we're going to need to manage the building. So there would be some surplus spaces plus vacancy. So, you know, I, I don't know how your building management company would deal with that in terms of who's going to park in the non-use spaces. But we're assuming guests are parallel.
So one apartment gets one parking space?
One point two five.
Uh, when you're assigning them?
Haven't gone that far yet.
Get into the management deal, I mean, probably have to pay extra for a second one and, you know.
And is the, um, is the entrance into the, in, in, into the, off of Cambridge into the, the first, the double row parking, is that like gated or secured in any way? Or is it sort of if you're a resident, you just pull right in? Or if I'm a non-resident, I can go through there if I want?
You could.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I don't think we're going to confuse it with gates now.
No, okay.
That's too much stacking.
Or security in any way.
We thought about that, we just, uh, I mean, if we, if we had to, we thought we could certainly. Initially, we didn't think we'd want to have a card access to a slow entrance in now.
Oh, yeah.
Back traffic up onto the street, it's not a real deep driveway. Kind of pull right in and you're under the building pretty quickly. And then neither Columbia or Cambridge have any restricted hours for parking currently. So there's no fires, lanes, restricting, you know, no parking from two to six, so it is open parking.
I mean, that, nowhere can park but, in Berkeley between two and six.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't see the sign, I didn't know that, okay.
Um, ju, I'm just following up on Commissioner Bardis' question about the parking. Um, so if someone was coming, a, a, around here, a lot of people avoid Coolidge, let's be frank. So if somebody wanted to go home coming down Cambridge or Columbia. Um, they can turn, say, say they're coming down Cambridge, they can turn left from Cambridge into the entrance there?
Yes.
And if somebody were coming down Columbia, they would turn, if they wanted to access that frontage part of the parking, they would turn down that first. They would turn in and then come down Cambridge to come in from the other end.
Well, we have no right turn or no left turn into the neighborhoods.
So if some, so if somebody were, somebody couldn't come down Columbia and go into that parking structure then?
No, I think I got your point, your first point a minute ago. Like if you came down Columbia and you're, you were parked on the west side of the parking, you'd have to go through the parking lot and back into the parking.
And then back into the parking lot.
But I would think that they would know Cambridge would be an easier street to come down, but yes, you're right, it is. But the parking.
So you use as a cut through, is what you're saying?
No, it's just if somebody was trying to come home on Columbia, they would, and their parking space was here.
Right.
They would go, they're not going to come out on the Coolidge and go around, they're going to cut through and in. I mean, it's just, it, this, this type of development, we're talking about fifty-eight units. The parking studies and things like that are going to be infinitesimally, uh, irrelevant. Because it's not one of these eight hundred unit massive residential areas.
Yeah, and I, and, and on that point, with the no, like coming out of there into the neighborhood, a, a sign is just a sign for someone to obey. I mean, I personally think potentially that sort of creates a non-part of the community. Like if I live there and maybe I want to go to the tennis court that's right there, like, like toward, you know, like, it sort of seems like you'd have to go out on Coolidge and go around when really like I'm part of this neighborhood, I just live in this unit, so.
It does annoy me at acquatats, so.
And it, and it.
I have to come out and go back onto Coolidge instead of just like down two streets on Kipling.
You'd rather have that, oh, and we thought it would probably appease the neighbors to know that they couldn't be, because I think, what I hear the neighbors coming and saying, all these residents are going to Woodward down our street now, we have fifty-eight more cars a day.
I would think that, I would think that.
I would definitely.
I'll be, well, I'm one that avoids Coolidge, I would be that person.
But you have, I mean, that's just, just a reality of the three streets.
Yeah, I mean, and I go multiple ways to my house, so I'm going not the same street. So I, I mean, I guess I would not think, to me, it's a hard sell to put signs up there to do that, but you know, and it's just a sign.
Yeah, I, I mean, frankly, I ignore those signs all the time if, if I need to.
We don't have to put them.
I don't buy the Einstein, but it drives me crazy.
I don't buy acquatats either.
I think a bit, in my opinion, a business is different than a residential.
So what you, what we see commonly when we get into the, the thick of the debate with the public here, with the neighbors here, is that, is it, um, we get comments like, oh, it's a beautiful building, it's a great project, I know we need it, but there's going to be traffic. And so they're looking for a way to diffuse and so we have, we have, you know, kind of anticipated that and say, well, if they come in and, and they have a point. I mean, it's a big change, it should, it should scare people a little bit, but if we tell them that they're, they're not allowed to turn left.
Are you going to design the aprons to direct them to, would you do that?
I was just thinking about that.
I don't know that the, uh, fire and emergency might not let us do that, so it would just be, you know, no left turn.
One other thing we didn't point out is we're, we're putting two hydrants on the project. Currently, all the hydrants are on the west side of Coolidge. We're adding a hydrant on the corner of Columbia and Coolidge. And then the back of the building on the south project, you'd notice underneath the snowmobile area says hydrant, that would be serviceable for the neighborhoods. Because, well, right now, the hydrants are across Coolidge. There's no, public safety doesn't have any way to plug in unless they're going across Coolidge for, to extinguish a fire on that strip. So I think that helps as well as some of the public, public safety's concerns. And we'll address that with the neighbors.
Any more questions?
I don't have any more questions, but I will say, in my opinion, I think it's softer on the front than it is the back. Just from, just from looking at the pictures. I don't know, what do you guys think?
Well, so I guess now we're going to move into the discussion mode.
Oh, I thought we were in the discussion.
I mean, we're kind of asking questions, so. Um, if we have more questions, we might ask you guys, come back up and answer them, but, uh, I think we're going to try and move into like talk mode up here.
Sorry.
No, 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 that's okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Softer on the front.
Yeah, I said my piece, I think the only, my, my biggest, my biggest issue would be, um, the aesthetics for the residences on Columbia and on Cambridge. Um, it's high, it's brown, it takes up the whole two blocks and potentially the street. Um, that would be my concern.
Yeah, I feel the same way. I mean, I know a lot of the, um, in the conceptual drawing, there's pictures of vegetation and trees and everything that helps kind of hide that facade. But is that going to be there right away? If, or are those, I mean, I know it's conceptual, but I think that should really be considered. Because I live on Columbia, but further east, so it wouldn't affect me. But I'm just thinking as driving in terms of immediate, uh, visual. But if I were to drive towards Coolidge, I'm just wondering, you know, how, how would that look? When would I first see, um, I, I guess that facade going westbound? I've been seeing it from Mortensen, Henley. Um, and I know it's, I, I realize that it fits the zoning, the height required in that zoning. But, uh, but yeah, I, I can't help but have those same concerns as well.
So I have a few notes. One is, um, I think we do have to, what I don't want to do, and I think we have, not we, but planning commission we, have done with past PUDs is talked a lot about building and all of that without putting it into the context of a PUD. Um, because it has to meet at least three of those regulations, whether we love it, whether we think it belongs there. Um, and I think that's part of where I struggle. Um, so I'm just going to give my versions of those for the moment. Um, if I look at high-quality architecture beyond site plan requirements, um, to me, because we have the design guidelines already in place, we're already demanding of a site plan fairly high levels of architecture. So for, to hit that to me, I want to be able to open my design guideline book and look at that and go, that like meets exactly what this wanted. It hits all of those buttons, because it has to go above and beyond. Um, I don't necessarily feel like this does, I feel like it's a huge wall of white. If you're coming on Coolidge, there's not a lot of interest in there. Um, there's no varying heights, there's no color, I think I'd really like to see color. I fear what this is going to look like after a couple years of snow and dirt flying around it. I feel like it's going to look kind of dirty and dingy, so I would like to see a much more interesting building. Um, where the parking is, that lower level is supposed to be really activated for pedestrians. Um, I don't know that the screening is enough to really activate that and make that somewhere that's very appealing and interesting and vibrant. Um, so I would look at that. I think you could achieve this high-quality architecture, I don't know that it's there in my personal opinion. If I look at two, extensive landscaping beyond site plan requirements, I, I don't feel like we've done that. And it's going to be hard to do that because they are shallow lots and you want, of course, you're, you're a business person. You want to fill it with as many money-making apartments as you can. This feels adequate for what we would normally require for a site plan. Um, and I would hope that you give your, um, tenants some, some green space, some open space. Um, but if I look at what our regulations would be, if it was a multifamily currently, it wouldn't even meet that. Because I think we have like a thirty percent, um, uh, space that it can take up, so it needs the open space. Um, it's.
Can I interrupt you for a second? Can we maybe open the door, it's really stuffy. I did, I know why you shut it, I just, I'm now dying.
No, no, that's okay. Um, it's not a historic resource, so that wouldn't count. Um, provision of open space or public plaza, we don't have that. Um, consolidation of partially dimensioned parcels, we don't have that. Shared vehicular access between properties, I don't know that it's really that either. And a complementary mix of uses or variety of housing types. We have apartments, but it's not really a variety. So I think my problem is, is finding three things that I can say, yes, those qualify for a PUD. Otherwise, we can talk about the design and all of that, but if it, if we can't agree, and it's going to be hard when there's only four of us here anyways, if we can't agree that, yes, it hits those, I don't want to waste your time in like coming back and trying to redesign to just hear, oh wait, it doesn't hit those, those marks.
So I had, did the same thing. I had four that it hit.
Okay.
So I have the open space, public space plaza, because I do think that the pocket park is something that is available to anybody, that another property may not develop there.
Do you think regular people are actually going to go behind the wall to go use it?
I don't know, I just.
Okay.
Count it as that. So consolidation of poorly dimensioned properties, I think this is a good use of space, so.
But are they poorly dimensioned properties?
I think so, based on being on Coolidge, like they're pretty narrow and it's kind of unique how it's done with the parking underneath. So that was, that was my thought. The, the shared vehicle access, um, what was that one? Shared vehicle access between properties and uses, so I guess I was viewing it as like the whole thing is shared. I may have to look that one up a little more. And then the variety of housing types, I do think that this is something that's not around. So it meets the master plan housing, increase in density and, and, you know, missing middle, all those different sort of things that we were looking at. So the, the first three, I do, the, the landscaping, architectural quality, um, I think it's nice design. Like for me, I think I like, I guess compared to what would be there in conventional zoning, I think it would be, this is what we would get anyway, so. It's, so the, the, those are the four, and then the ar, the historic one doesn't really count, so. So I had those four that I was sort of considering why PUD.
Right.
As well as what was in the, um, you know, which three, so.
So I thought, um, since this was conceptual, that we would necessarily wait for the, the plan to be submitted and for the reviews to tell us what the site plan requirements are for us to then evaluate whether this exceeds that.
Yeah, I mean, like, so this is just based on this, however, I only mention that because in the past, it has been a very long drawn-out process before it finally was like, oh yeah, it doesn't meet these, so sorry. And, and I didn't want to do that either.
I think it's great that you, oh, I think it's great that you brought it up and we're having this discussion. Um, and I'll tell you, I represent local government and, um, usually I see a lot more public benefit. Um, such as contributing to, you know, uh, furtherance of a sidewalk or, um, so, so I, I, I guess what I'm trying to say is I don't think that these are onerous requirements. And I'm sh, and I'm, I'm, I'm pretty confident that the applicant knows we're going to be looking at this when it comes down to it. But I do appreciate this discussion and hearing your thoughts on it.
Can I interject one thing? Because I think, um, Commissioner Mama, you brought up a good point. A lot of PUD ordinances are written with a general public bene, benefit provision, not with a specific list of it has to meet these particular things. It's more of like a general concept of what is the public benefit. Ours is very unusual in that it lists out very specific criteria that we can consider as public benefit. So a sidewalk provision, right, is something you see in a lot of other communities. I don't know that if a sidewalk gap, which we don't have a lot of fortunately here, but if a sidewalk gap was offered, it doesn't really tick off one of those items, but it is commonly seen in a lot of other communities. So I just wanted to point out that ours are very specific standards.
And they're not very onerous and they're obviously up for interpretation.
As everything in our ordinances, right? I mean, that being said, I, I think this is a perfect place for multifamily, of course, and I would like to see it there. Not the hugest fan of the walkway personally. Um. And not really sure that I'm loving the parking ratio. Um, I got one point one nine. Um, and I even tried to like not deal with our, our ordinance and look at like one and a half for a one bedroom and like one for a studio, um, and I figure a studio loft is really like a one bedroom. Um, and I'm still at like eighty-two, um, parking spaces. It's a lot of shy sp, parking spaces and I get that you're assigning them, but, you know, people will get an apartment by themselves and then a boyfriend or somebody comes on the, the scene and then there's an overnight guest and where are they staying? They can't park on the street overnight, so I feel like there becomes a problem at that parking level. Um.
Question, yeah. I don't know the answer to this, that's why I'm asking it. Um, is our no parking from two to six, I thought that was just on residential streets, does that apply to Coolidge as well?
Yes, it's the whole city. It's the whole city and I don't see that changing anytime soon.
Public lots too.
Public lots too, that may be more debatable, but yeah.
And, but you're, they're actu, you're actually counting the street Coolidge parking as part of your part, you're not?
While you haven't purchased the parking lot to the south, um, I live right by there. It's not very well parked, right, it, it, there's very rarely ever anybody there. Um, is that something you would think about maybe trying to work out a shared parking arrangement with them? So maybe some of your overflow or extra parking or overnight parking or something could maybe occupy that space?
We've discussed it, we have not approached and we want to see where we came down here. Uh, that would probably require them to de-restrict in some form or fashion their, their parcel to allow for parking with us, which would probably lessen the value of the property unless they sold to us. Um, so I, I haven't raised that question yet with them. Um, we also, I think there's an allocation for bike racks too, we've got fair amount of bike racks in here, just, we hadn't talked about that, but there is, um, but we've got twenty bike racks in a. I know we're not going to get twenty parking spaces out of that, but.
You'll only get two.
Well, it's, so we go from sixty-nine to seventy-one. We're moving closer. And I think you have a ten percent variance allowance as a commission, right?
Yes, I mean, it's not an automatic.
Understood. No, we're not, just, we hadn't, we hadn't discussed that much about the parking until you brought it up and it's a great point.
Well, it is.
I mean, that would kind of be in our thing, right? I mean, and that's going with a not our, our, our ordinance still says two, no matter what, so you're way far off of two.
Understood.
But that was kind of me looking at what.
Issues you see down the road.
Right.
And, and what it's probably going to move to, right? I don't think we'll keep two for a studio forever because that seems silly, but you know.
That's what we were anticipating was the future plan for the city. We were originally going to come in before the Gateway District or before the, the complete rezoning was done.
And, and it hasn't been rezoned. We're still, you were talking about before the master plan.
Correct. Right. We talked about coming in before the master plan, which would require all sorts of variances and we decided not to, not to, you know, pick, pick it up at that point. So we, we thought this would be consistent or very close of being consistent with where you're going and could be a model project, given the use of the first floor parking to set an example of what is doable in this district with the depths of property being as shallow as they are. If you don't find some room in there, you're not, nothing's going to develop because you, the economics don't, won't work. And people just will leave things like they are. So we're sort of pioneering on this, thinking that it could set a good tone for the city and create a good example. And then give us future plans to go south and across the street as well with other projects as there, as we, you know, we're, we're ready to invest in those. So we're, we know we're not a hundred percent there with parking. We know we're, that's the purpose of this meeting was to hear you out because we want to come in with something that you're going to support. We're not, we're not, we're not going to try and swim upstream here. So if we know what you're looking for, you can give us clear direction. We'll, we'll either do it or we won't. It's real simple. I'm not going to come in and argue and negotiate and, and do a lot of politicking. Well, because we want to build a project that we can work with. If we have too little parking, no one's going to live there.
Right.
Then what's the point? So we're maxing out the parking best we can under the current, the current plan and configuration. And we think, we think it works for a project this size and we're willing to bet on that. Now, we own the building next door and we have two parking lots. We put our building in the middle of the lot, we own the whole block. We put parking lots on both sides. I don't want to have, if I had to do shared parking, I could use my own parking lot, right? So we've got, we've, we discussed that as well, but then again, if I go to sell that property, I now have a somewhat, a version of a deed restriction on parking. We have more parking on our project than we need, so maybe I could throw a couple of spots off of our site dedicated to it. But then it gets into snowplowing and everything else, so we're, we're trying to make these self-liquidating standalone projects rather than feeding one off the other for future valuations.
So I think if you, I mean, I, I like the idea of assigning because somebody comes in and they know exactly how many parking spots they have.
What about across the street?
But we also still need, you know, some wiggle room for, for guest parking or, you know, what have you.
Now, we could. We have the building across the street which has, which has far more parking than we need.
Crossing Coolidge.
I mean, a- and that area is not easy to cross.
You know, as far as visitor parking, I mean, if you have a visitor, they can park on the parallel parking. And then they just got to leave. I mean, it's like owning a house. If you only have a little driveway, you can only, right. I mean, it's not, it's not a business. This is residence, so.
So if they're, I'm, I'm imagining these are very small units.
Seven hundred to eleven, six hundred and eleven hundred.
I mean, you can have, you can have a guest.
The bigger ones are about the size of my house, so.
You have a lot more people living in homes up and down Cambridge and Columbia than their driveways support.
I mean, but to your point, you can stack two or three cars in most driveways, you know, overnight.
Right, right.
And, you know, this, this type of residence is going to attract, I'm assuming mostly single people, if not, you know, eldest couples. And they're going to have friends who may want to visit. Can't park on the street. So I think that is an issue that needs to be worked out.
But is that for us? I mean, I feel in a resident, there's extra spots that will be sold somehow probably. And/or if you don't have a car, then you're going to get a spot with your unit that you could also make money off of potentially or whatever. I mean, I know in Royal Oak, you know, people that live in single, single parking spot places and they had bought one from the, the guy that didn't use his for, you know, four hundred a month.
They can, but in Royal Oak, you can park on the street overnight.
Not in the area they were at. It was metered.
And even on these streets, even if you're visiting for the day, I can imagine a lot of the overflow going right on the street.
I mean, so if it.
Something to think about also when you're discussing this with the residents, they're going to be concerned about your guests parking on the streets in front of their houses.
Oh, they have that issue with their neighbors currently. So they get told or they get ticketed. That's the city ordinance. They can't govern the, the guests of the tenants, right?
I know. I'm just saying, that's going to be the, some of the concerns you.
Sure.
You will hear.
Of course. I think that's, that's natural when you're putting a project up like this. That's, we're going to, we're trying to anticipate as much as we can and not have to ask for variances. With the PUD, we think it gives some flexibility to a really tough place to develop. And that's where we're looking for some latitude in that regard.
I think from the master plan perspective, being part of that process, this is kind of what I was thinking as for the FLB. You know, and putting the parking underneath is, is a genuine, you know, good idea, I think.
I would agree.
Too bad you can't go underground.
And I think they'll have to figure out whether it makes more sense to wait till we're done figuring out that regulations and it being rezoned or trying to do a PUD, which admittedly has hoops, it is supposed to have hoops to jump through. Because it's saying, you're doing stuff that you can't do here, so you have to give us, you know, something amazing and great and over the top in order to do that thing here. But there should be trade-offs for every, at least what I think. For everything that doesn't quite tick what the, what the zoning regulation, there should be some trade-off and maybe that's. I'm putting something here that you really want, which is true. But those are my thoughts. I would like to see it something other than white, so it looks, because it's going to feel huge right now. Because there are those, you know, little houses that are right there. They're set back a fair amount. This is going to feel very abrupt when it comes up. So anything that we can do, I think, to make it more interesting and more vibrant, I would like to see.
Just color something in the PUD approval.
So we have the design guidelines. They don't really get into color too much, if I remember correctly. We don't have anything in the ordinance that regulates color in the zoning ordinance.
No, I think, I, I looked through the de- the design guidelines today and they just said that it was a great way to kind of break things up by using color throughout it. And different roof hi- roof heights and different, you know, accent pieces to kind of make it visually interesting.
Kristen, recently we reviewed a plan and I don't recall if it was conceptual or, where they were proposing a living wall.
Oh, that was probably one of the marijuana businesses.
And do we know has, I, I was questioning whether it was practical. Do we know whether it has that, has that been built?
Not yet, no.
Do we have any living walls in the city outside of what was being proposed? I don't know, something to consider if you can, if you can find a way to make that work. Would add the color, like a living wall or a rooftop, some greenery or something to add to the landscaping that way, which would then help you fall into one of the requirements for beauty. Just something to think about.
We are greening it up. The screen on the front of the, the patios would be, we'd try to green that up for sure. And that, you might get some visibility there, but I think if we set back far enough from the road, you're not going to see it.
What's in your pocket park?
Wall Joe? What are we doing in the pocket park?
Basically, it's just a, there's a gazebo pathway. It's a little toned-down one. There's another earlier, I think it's one of the.
Oh, go up. That's the start. I didn't see one in our packet.
Right there.
Oh, there we go.
So, yeah, it's just a small little spot with a little, kind of a gazebo with a patio, open patio pathway, some benches, just a place to get outside, walk the dog.
And that's what I was wondering, where do the, is there grass there for the dogs or will they just be going out into the regular streets?
No, there's, there's the three rectangles. One is an open patio coming out. Right. And then there's the pathway around and then grass everywhere else.
Oh, okay. And even on the, what would that be?
South side. Right, we could, right.
Well, is there sidewalk there for people to access Coolidge or is that the sidewalk?
Right at the property line is the sidewalk.
So this is just a pa- an internal pathway for your development, adjacent essentially to the sidewalk? But your, your pathway shows it from the park down to Coolidge, so people can actually, from the park, just exit off to Coolidge?
Yes.
And there's no sidewalk to the west of that?
Here?
Remember, yeah. What about adjacent to going?
So this is, that's the parking lot that's the optional.
Oh, okay. The parking and then there's the next street with the sidewalk?
Correct.
I see. So, so I guess I'm, in my mind, can people go from the pocket park to Coolidge if you took out that pathway? And I guess the answer is yes, through the parking lot down the sidewalk. And come up the regular street, yeah. So yeah, if you got rid of the pathway, you could put more greenery there and more landscaping.
I mean, I'm wondering, and I don't want to push the building too far to the neighbors, but what I'd love to see is like a pocket park for the public, right? If you can bring that to the front, then you have something that is a public use too and a public benefit to. I saw something like this at Harvard Commons. It's in the middle. Nobody uses it because it's dark, it's enclosed, it's not like really there and open. Even Harvard Commons people don't use their inner courtyard. It, it looked good on a plan, but it doesn't actually work in real life.
And in the building, you can push back over the top of the houses, it's going to be right on the wall to go do that. I don't know if there's a different way to lay it out, but this was not intended to be a public park.
It's worth mentioning, can you scroll, can you scroll the picture up just a little bit like that? Okay, so this is the curb line, right? This is the property line. This is the building line. That's twenty feet. You know, we're talking about something like thirty-five from the street to the building. So there's, you have trees in your sidewalks and then we have green space and then we have a building. It's, you know, roughly the full length of this room from this, from where cars drive to where the building is from.
The current, trees are very substantial.
So you could, you could take, I mean, this, this amount of land between the sidewalk and the building, even if we just incorporated the sidewalk as getting wider against the building and suddenly creating a zone that thirty-five feet of paving and benches and maybe even if the benches cross the property line, they just occur along the public right.
What sort of opportunity do we have with the, the green space up against the first floor parking? We've got the screen wall. I was, we were envisioning some higher grasses there.
Yeah, right.
Soften that whole look on that first floor, so you're not looking at a parking lot. Looking at an architecturally designed screen wall with airflow through it, with greenery around it. And there's, the trees that are out there are substantial. We, we want to trim those up, clean them up. But they're big trees. They're very mature all along. In our building, we didn't have any trees, so we put some in. But these are very substantial trees and you're not going to drive up and see a white building. You're going to see trees. If you take a look at it when you're heading home in the morning or during the day, and if you, and I've looked at this from every angle for quite some time. You go to CVS, you go right across the street to our building, you're really looking into greenery, especially this time of year. Because there's, there's big canopies on those trees.
We'll do a much better job showing the, the tree foliage correctly, both on the neighbor's side that's remaining and on the street side. And, you know, depict it correctly. Even if it, even if it's fully screened in one rendering, so we don't see the building, we'll just be honest about it and then show it different ways to demonstrate it.
And I think we all appreciate this is just conceptual, but you're hearing some of the concerns.
Any other thoughts? Things they, we would like them to take with them so that we have given them as much information as we can?
So with the PUD, what influence do we have over the spanning of the street? Is that, is that like it's a go or no-go eventually?
Well, there's nothing in the ordinance that says the street can't be spanned. And DPW and FIRE have preliminarily commented on it and, you know, provided it's the right height and everything, they're, they're okay. The design guidelines don't really talk about spanning one way or the, or the other. You can make suggestions to the applicant and, and they can respond to those suggestions. But as Chairperson Kempner said, it, it's really those criteria as part of the PUD that, that the applicant has to meet. And building spanning, I guess it would be up for a matter of interpretation, whether you think that's a, an architectural design that is above and beyond the usual standards. That's your interpretation.
Okay. I mean, I, I like it. I guess I was just wondering if like legal and then all of the departments would have the final say from a, the air rights part, maintenance over a public street.
And that would be something, yes, as from a staff level, we would look at all of that. Just from our pre-application meeting, the spanning was suggested by Carlyle Wortman. And DPW and Public Safety were okay with that concept without reviewing the details. The other thing to keep in mind with the PUD is these are things offered by the applicant. So if they write up their application and, and do feel like they have a higher standard of architectural design, it's, it's on them to write up how they feel like they're meeting that standard or exceeding it. This is not a, a back and forth where the planning commission can request something. PUDs don't, don't work like that. You can comment and make suggestions, but the city cannot make requests. These are things that are offered by the applicant in order to meet these standards.
I know this is your session. We did come prepared with a legal opinion. It came up. We want to anticipate that ahead of time, so.
Come to the microphone to speak.
I'm sorry. I know this is your discussion, but I'm here. We brought Ryan Pluck, our attorney. We did ask to have some research done on air rights. Joe brought it up some months ago. And we, before we got too far into this, we wanted to understand, you know, is this possible? Does the city have the right to do this? Is there, has it been done in the past? So we asked, we asked to have some research done and if you'd like the benefit of that research, Ryan would give you a couple of minutes on it. Because eventually it's going to get to the attorneys and someone's going to have to draft a lease or a, a variance or a use, a use permit.
Because eventually it's gonna get to the attorneys, and someone's gonna have to draft a lease or a, a variance or a, uh, use, a use permit. So if you'd like, Ryan could talk, give you a few minutes on his findings.
Would that be helpful for you, or is that something you'd rather just read in an, in a future packet?
I guess I can read it later, but I feel like it's a big part of the design, and if our intention is to move forward with conceptual design elements, that is a big one, in my opinion, so.
Well, I don't think any of us expressed concern with having that.
Okay.
My only concern with it comes back to, I, I, I keep repeating myself, the aesthetics from the residential side. And I feel like that m, m, makes it feel more like a wall versus anything else. So just an aesthetic concern, not, um, the actual.
And from a staff level, every department, relevant department has looked at and considered a standard as an option, and staff is okay with considering it.
We're concerned about the city's legal right to do it in the first place, and we wanted an opinion on that because the resident may, that may be something that comes up later, and we didn't want that to bite us if in fact the city didn't have the right or the ability to do that, so that's why we have a, we got a legal opinion that's.
I appreciate that, but I personally don't need to hear that, and we're, we're gonna get it from our people.
Yeah.
If you're comfortable with it.
Target as in it'll be honed in on by, by the city, so that, that, that's it. But there's no other reason why it can't be there than considering.
I mean, from a, uh, functional perspective, I don't have any issue with that. I'm sure all of that will be ironed out. And, you know, you already said that TPW has signed off on it, and, um, staff has signed off on it. I guess, you know, my, I'm just kinda echoing, uh, our common concerns about the aesthetic of everything. I mean, um, you know, along with the, the back wall, if you will, the back of the building facing the neighborhood, how's that span gonna look? You know, I think that is that the. I mean, I think, you know, use-wise, I think it's, 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 it's interesting, but I just want it to be harmonious. Architecture to the city. We don't have any residential spans. We don't have any spans of any kind. Um, and I'm okay with that. I just want to make sure that it's harmonious with the, with the existing.
Are there actually units up there, or I thought that was a walkway? So the third floor has a, I mean, a walkway that connects the two and the four units. So you can't even put more glass up there because that's a unit. Those are units. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
From a staff standpoint, for your point, Mike, the, if you had elevation views. Back at the cross streets up Columbia to sort of see what that looks like. Cause I think there's a fairly, I think it kind of rises up as you go east up Columbia. I think everything kind of gets higher elevation-wise within the city from Coolidge.
Actually, I think it's the opposite.
Oh, really? Oh, I guess that.
Elevation decreases.
There's a bunch of up and down. So however Columbia goes, it'd be good to see at different cross-section points what the profile of that road is and what you would, if you live, you know, ten houses down, kind of what it would look like first right there.
Right, what's the, what's the approach at, you know, the Henley intersection? What's the approach at the Berkeley intersection?
I think a lot of this will come down to the opinions of those residents. I think it's gonna really be important that, that, that they're on board. Because that's my primary concern when I keep bringing up aesthetics. If I'm living on the street, how am I gonna feel? It's hard to visualize. I mean, I'm not an architect. It's hard for me to just visualize what it will look like. I'm just looking at a picture.
You know, it's, frankly, it's something new, so it's kind of hard to conceptualize, you know? It's new to the city, so.
And there's not, I mean, i, it's not like they're tearing down a building, a big building, right? They're tearing down small homes, so their view from many of these houses has always been totally across Coolidge to the other side of Coolidge. And it, it most certainly won't be that anymore.
And who knows, maybe they don't want that with all the traffic on Coolidge. Maybe, maybe the neighbors would prefer to look at the building than, I don't know.
Yeah, and there's a diminishing point where the view won't matter from, for the houses.
From how far you are.
Sure, sure.
Sorry.
Off of the back of the building on the south property line, span five houses. And I sat down with the neighbors and said, listen, you can continue to hear noise from Eleven Mile, look at Dirsh Lumber's sign, or we can put a wall up and you can landscape it. And all five of them spoke in favor of it at, at the, um, planning commission. We did it. So we're gonna present properly to the neighbors to get them on board. There's gonna be some that don't like it. You're used to that, I'm sure. Um, there's really three houses impacted by this. And I think it does diminish as you go further down, down the road, cause it just, it'll kind of fade away. Especially as the, the greenery matures over the wall. You'd be looking at a wall, you'd be looking, just like the back of our building now. If you look at our office building, it's just completely, you see a, a red brick wall and cedars, you know, that are fifteen feet in the air. So they don't even see the building, and that was by design. So we would do the same thing here to try to, try to hide the building as best we can with your own, your evergreen of some kind. But it's tight on this side because the, the parking goes up to the wall. The pocket park allows us to do it on the south side, but not so much on the, on the north side, which is why we would, we'd try to get this neighbor whose house is off the wall to allow us to put a nice green landscape in there for them. We've got to, we've got to work with the neighbors to make it work, um, and do something that's favorable to them and enhances their house as well. So we'll, we'll attempt to do that. Okay, thank you.
Any last parting thoughts?
Thank you for continuing to invest in the city.
Do you have any questions for us based on what we have expressed or thought, or you feel like you have some idea of what our concerns are, what we're looking for? It's hard, there's only four of seven of us.
I'd like to comment about the, about the coloration of, of the brick and, and the rendering, and maybe the fact that it's a little overexposed in, in the sun. We think we can, we think we can soften it. I think that, I think that we're, I'm personally opposed to a red, a red brick building. I think that the metro, I mean, Detroit's.
Be careful, your client is right behind you.
I know. I, but I, it's just, it's, it's time for things that are cleaner and sharper and tighter. And, uh, you know, the electrification of vehicles, all this futuristic things, and to come in with another quasi-historic, mm, red brick. We've had this model done in black, red, gray, multicolor, and so it doesn't affect the value of the building. It affects my, affects my soul. So we'll get there with you.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anything else you wanted to say about any of that question? All right, so we'll move on to liaison reports. Does anybody have anything to report? All right. Do we need more liaisons?
Let's wait till we get the rest of it.
Um, any staff comments?
Yeah, I do. We met, um, so we had our second reading for the outdoor seating that was approved, um, for the principal permitted use and a lot of the rooftop outdoor in ED areas of, for food establishments. And the most thing we were working on was the budget, so we approved a budget for our 2023, uh, start July 1st, and the CIP for, uh, to 2030.
Thank you. Good night, guys.
I had a few comments, or just one comment, really. Um, the master plan, or the master plan, the zoning ordinance steering committee had their first meeting earlier this month. There wasn't a whole lot discussed at the meeting, so I don't have a memo for you this evening. It was really more like how we make decisions and, and things like that. But from this point forward, I will have a summary memo for the planning commission at every meeting talking about what topic the steering committee discussed and any potential recommendations or decisions that were made. It was determined if, if there was a, a time on the steering committee where we really couldn't come to a, a major consensus on things, that, that those items would be brought, brought to the planning commission. So I know you both know this, but stay tuned. For some additional information, I will make monthly reports on the steering committee's activities.
Any commissioner comments?
Move to adjourn.
All in favor? Turned.
The good old days. You never had to ask for a motion.
I never had to, no.
I was not sure if you were gonna like have something else.